Alright, looks like we're all ready and it's seven o'clock. So, I will call meeting to order. Additions to the agenda.
I added one, a letter of resignation and then I also put under, if you notice on the online version, under Jordan's report, there's some huddle information there. That's just for your information, for you to look at and then we can talk about it later.
Got it.
Looking at the revenues, I'd like to add just a discussion over the SR3 funds, where we're at, what our thoughts are for those.
SR3. Okay, we have a motion to approve. Thank you, second?
All set.
Move it second and the additions to the agenda, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Alright, let's start in with our minutes from our last meeting. Everybody's had a chance to read and we can roll pretty fast, we can stuff. Any corrections or additions on minutes? Okay, now we'll go write it up to board, April board bills. Any questions or comments on board bills?
I did have one question. So, there's the JP Morgan C-list.
Yep.
And then down towards the bottom, there's one that says JP Morgan repay? What's the difference between those two?
So JP Morgan and automatic withdrawal, it all comes out of our general fund. So, anything that's charged on the JP Morgan card that should come out of the activity fund, I have to pay back
Okay.
the general fund from the activity fund. So, it's just a, a transfer, I guess.
There is a, I don't see anything under the JP Morgan tab.
Yeah, there was a heading up there, sorry.
Any other questions, comments, concerns on board bills?
Are we gonna get the list of what it was at some point?
Well, we need to see it, if you wanna look through it, we need to see it tonight. JP Morgan, Denver, that.
Must I look at the wrong?
I had to scroll to the, to the side to see it, yeah.
To the right? Oh no, to the left.
Ah, there it is.
Column A. Okay, if there are more questions on board bills, it's for revenue, or dollars sheet, excuse me, it's the next one.
It's actually doing pretty good on revenue.
Is there any questions on that, help sheet?
Can you read the revenue? SR3?
Could've talked about that there with that. So, I guess on the SR3, my question is, that hundred sixty forty-two, this has received date, was that during this school year or is that total of what we've received for SR3?
Total that we've claimed so far is two hundred and seventy-two thousand six hundred. We have three hundred and fifty-two thousand seven sixty-five left.
Okay, yeah, that's exactly what I was after, was that number. Do we have anything in the works on future claims?
Just curriculum. We're looking at upgrading the social studies curriculum. And then I think all of the core curriculums are updated, right?
Possibly some socio-emotional for the counselor is what she was looking at because we have some old piece together material.
But that one shouldn't be that much. So, that's basically it.
Six, six through eight maybe, reading, cause that grants only K five.
Right. So, we got the fifty thousand dollars for that HQI grant. But that's only K through five, but we're looking at K through eight.
Okay.
So, we would have to pay for six through eight.
Oh, I see. What is our deadline, I guess, for September twenty twenty-four?
Twenty twenty-five?
Or four.
What do you do to get the word out?
You can claim salaries too.
Right.
And that'll work like it'll in probably one month.
Right.
How much is left?
Three hundred and fifty-two thousand two hundred and thirty-six.
Not to say it.
That's the cleanest way of getting your money. We don't have any issues when we send in that.
Sure.
And curriculum hasn't been issued.
Okay, I'm good. Sounds good, sounds like we got a plan, just wanted to check on that. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions or comments on revenue? If not, expenditures? Getting a good percentage through the year already. We had only the last one of school.
Twenty-nine days actually.
But, but it was coming in.
The kids told me yesterday, today, today.
So, I noticed on most of these that like, for the most part, all the subs, the percentage of budget is a lot higher. Is that something we should just kind of take into consideration in budget more for in the future or, I mean, what's the, cause I know like ones like three hundred and thirty percent, most of them are over a hundred percent. I know that's a harder one to predict, but.
Yeah, I mean, you can, so when you sit down and do next year's budget, you look at it, okay, let's bump it up to what it was this actual, and then see what happens.
Yeah. Cause I know last year it was the same thing.
Yeah.
Always seems like it's higher and higher every year and that's one percentage that always jumps out at me. Makes sense cause it's for subs, but.
And usually, you know, when you're going through the budget sheet and planning for the next year and you see that, then okay, why do we need to bump it up then and then, then we usually do.
Any other questions or comments on expenditures? Okay, now we got a student activity report. Those are current senior classroom and their class trip funds, are they set?
They will actually withdraw, which means they could beg someone to drive for them since Rolf couldn't and pay a little bit more and so we're set to go.
Any other any questions or comments on student activity funds? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion to approve our consent agenda. Joining me, Shannon Second, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same time. Motion carried, activity directors report.
They are currently working on summer gym and camp schedules. Camp rec is scheduled for June first through the fourteenth. The extracurricular banquet, which is going, both sports and fine arts is set for May twentieth at RTHS. And that's it, and of course, we need activity plus driving.
Always. Can I just, Mr. Bouts mentioned again real quick, we told me today on bus driving, just it's a fifteen hundred dollar course that, that Harlow's offers, a, the school pays for, for anyone who wants to get their bus license, right?
Right. So, yeah, if, to drive the fourteen passenger bus, you would need to do a defensive driving course, which you can do online, and that's like four, twenty-five hours or something like that. DOT, physical, pre-employment drug test, and then you'd do random drug test after that. And then attend the, attend the annual workshop that we have at the school. That's your only requirements for fourteen passenger. Then when you go one over that, then you have to go get your permit for, I think, class B, so you have to study all those sections of the book. And then plus get your school bus and passenger endorsement with that. So, you have to go get, what they want you to do is take your permit, pass those, go get your physical, make sure that you are in shape to drive and then they will take you into the Harlow's program. And we would pay for that and get the time that they spend for doing the training, so. So, it's a good deal.
Not a bad deal.
And then, you know, you get free burgers sometimes when you are the bus driver.
You get the games free too.
Yep, getting the games free, all there's all, just all kinds of benefits.
The benefits go on and on, once a shit's per day.
There was something good for a parent that once again.
On the huddle info, is that just for us to look at later or is there something?
Just review through it and kind of see what you think. And we had talked about that, you know, doing something for over in Taylor. With the huddle, that can also do the stats and stuff for you, which is pretty nice and handy. So, I, we were talking about maybe looking at the huddle for over here and then take and move the NFHS over there.
Oh, okay.
Cause most of the varsity is over here and then that would, and I think they use huddle for all their stats and video and all that stuff and then coaches can share stuff within that app.
And they can share with universities for students that want to move on too.
So, just something to peruse over and then we can dig into it further and see what's the option.
It's not owned by China, is it? Was there a subscription requirement?
What's that?
Was there a subscription requirement on huddle for viewers, like NFHS?
No, not with this one, right?
I didn't think there was.
I don't, I don't think there is.
I don't think so. I don't think we had in the past.
Yeah.
Right.
I think it's in that email, I'd have to read through there again.
Only for the session.
Mister Adambone went through the specs and everything, so.
I'm just wondering, because like with the NFHS, you have to have a subscription to view it. And if it doesn't cost that much more to get another camera to hook it up in Taylor, why not?
Exactly, that's what I mean, we look at all the options.
Yeah.
I don't know what we can do with, if we own those cameras from NFHS or.
I think we bought those.
We have to pay for the cameras and the subscription on top of it. I don't know, that's so long ago, I don't know if we have to.
But yeah, it's just getting started, take a look, maybe we can have everything on huddle and that would be the simplest way.
Right.
Cause yeah, it's like, what, ten, twelve bucks a month for NFHS.
And it's not very good quality.
No, no.
Cause when it sits there and goes like this all the time.
Well, then not only that, but so you've got, say you've got three games. One game goes into overtime or whatever, if there's not enough time blocked out, then it's gonna livestream shuts off on the last game. Does that happen a few times too?
Or other times you're watching the janitor clean.
Yeah.
Okay, we're taking a look at that. Okay, principal reports, Mister Patterson.
Alright, so we wrapped up reading month in March, just a couple of quick facts, just to, just to kind of celebrate the kiddos. We had a hundred and twenty-two students that we were tracking their, their reading minutes and they read nearly forty thousand minutes during the, during the month of March, so that's awesome for them, you know, the, the more you read, the better you get at it, so we emphasize it and we stress the importance of reading. We had a book swap event where students could bring in, I think I mentioned it last meeting, students could bring in maybe older books that they don't read anymore at home. They can bring it in and kind of recycle them with other students, so I don't remember the exact number, but I know for sure it was over a hundred and fifty, I would say it was like one sixty-eight, somewhere in that, in that range. So, a hundred, a hundred and sixty-eight different books that were brought in that kind of were dispersed to different households and so I thought that was kind of cool as well. We finished up working on the word selfless, which was a good lesson for all those kiddos to, to focus on and, and practice more importantly. Mrs. Ravinius's class, one class of the month, our new word of the month, which should have been number one slash partnered with every other word we've been focusing on is self-control. So, explain to the kiddos what it means to be in charge of their actions, to be in charge of their words and their thoughts and how that plays out. And then, you know, this is a good one where we can share a lot of hands-on examples for the kiddos of what does self-control look like and how, how can we show that and, you know, tying it into other words as well. So, we'll be working on that through April. Our parent teacher conference, we have the, that percentage now, we have ninety-seven percent attendance, we just missed a handful of families for those. ELA curriculum updates, just cause we're down to our last couple of options here. I'm gonna work on setting up some, some webinars similar to what we did with social studies, cause it's one thing to have some, have the physical samples and hands-on, but it's also another thing to have someone going to kind of show, guide you through the online components and maybe some different aspects and answer some questions for us as well, so that'll kind of be our last step. NDSA is ongoing for third and fourth grade currently, so that'll go through into the last week of April for us. And on the career side of things, the juniors have the ACT set up for April twenty-third at City Hall. And the sophomores will be taking their pre-ACT on May second. Couple, couple of things lined up for them as well.
What is the NDSA testing, what kind of time burden are we talking about there?
As much as they need to finish or.
Oh, but I'm just saying, what's the general time commitment we end up taking for school for that?
Couple hour window.
Okay.
We, they don't do multiple assessments in a day, so they'll, they'll knock out one, some will finish, some will need a little additional time.
Also a couple hour per assessment, you're saying, in a day? Or a couple hours total for the, per student, for the.
Probably an hour to two hours for each individual assessment.
Okay.
And then you'll always have some, and maybe need a little extra time.
Sure, sure.
It's like a tape to the wall.
Yeah, I wasn't gonna bring up that experience, but yes, it did happen.
It was a good experience.
It, it was, it was.
The kids loved it, at home, everyone was still saying at my house, we have to go back, I love town.
Well, I filmed my Tuesday, I do my daily do, so I filmed the next school day, I filmed it from the wall and I said, guys, no one came to stay here, so I'm really grateful.
They need counseling.
I'm just glad to help you, I, some of those pieces of tape were an anchor to the wall, they were just just on my body, so I'm very grateful that I only did it to hang up there. Yeah, and then I was kind of the incentive of it is they got pieces of tape per, you know, based on the amount of minutes read in.
Yep.
It was awesome, it was a good experience for them.
So, they stood, you stood on a stool and they taped you up and then pulled the stool out.
And then I went in assembly from being taped to the wall and then Mrs. Addison turned the lights off on me and left. And it was awesome, I was just kind of stuck in the gym. But actually, my plan was to stay up there, cause I knew students would come and look at me, look at me on the way out to the bus or on the way out to the car, so I at least wanted to hang up there, so I was, I was free hanging for like thirty-five minutes probably, thirty minutes. Just to let everyone get out so they would believe my story that I was up there all weekend. Kindergarteners for sure believed it, fourth graders saw right through it, sorry. And that's all I have for.
Good, alright, thanks.
Alright, our parent teacher conferences, we're March fifth and sixth, we have a few makeup conferences. After the makeup conferences, we're at ninety-eight percentage, so kudos to families for putting in the effort that we get in our community, it's absolutely amazing. What I've just handed out is strategic planning, the strategic planning committee met on Tuesday, March twelfth to review and update Richland Taylor strategic plan. The members are listed there, who was all involved in that. The two from each school are on the leadership team and then we always include a board person and community members. There was a couple of community members that couldn't make it last minute, but the other two that are on there did. And we reviewed and updated the plans, so it's fairly similar to this year's for staying on track to continuing to improve at the same strategies for our school. We go through it every section and decide what, where we are at, what successes we've had and what needs to be improved. So, we went through the curriculum instruction and as we're getting new curriculum, we're obviously gonna have to keep that and update it and spend time doing that. So, that's still listed and if you want to pull it apart, it actually lines up like this. If you want it together, you can keep it together, but that way it's a little bit easier to see what the initiative is and what the key measures, how we're measuring that throughout the year, okay? So, Jesse and I were part of that team also and then we looked at student engagement, which we are improving at, but kept that as we continue to need more student engagement. Social emotional learning, we did talk about the fact that in our today's society, that will probably always be one of our initiatives because it's so important to focus on the student's social emotional learning, but also the staff and everybody as a whole to make sure that everybody is comfortable and safe learning. Data analysis and use, we kept that obviously because our decisions need to be data-based and looked at how we can differentiate it with the students and what they need at different times. We did implement, and Jesse led that team, we did implement FastBridge. Mister Bouts and Jesse and I had looked at that previously, cause that was one of the science-based strategies that would be acceptable for our title and so went forward with that. So, our title people have been trained now and we will train everyone else following, but we wanted our title people to lead it because they're gonna be the most ones differentiating based on what they need to help the students. So, we're working with that for assessments, we will have to meet leadership team-wise and teacher-wise what we're going to do, we've started to talk about, are we gonna continue to use Renaissance Star, are we gonna completely switch over to FastBridge? However, we don't wanna over-assess our kids, so what's gonna be functional? We already spent so much time on the classroom with all of our assessments we have to do. What can we use to look at and then continually use without having to use multiple and take them out for different things? So, we're looking at quick, easy assessments that don't take so much time and also actually give samples to the teachers. And you can expand on this if you want, but what happens is you do the assessment, but it tells you exactly what the students low at. So, a teacher can say, Mrs. Tutterell is already practicing it, but she can say, okay, these three students need to work on this and these three students need to work on this and these five students need to work on this, so she makes groups and they work on that for two days until everybody masters what they're poor at and need to be more successful and then they go back to regular instruction. So, it's really about raising the bar for everybody, whatever level they're at, so I do see that that's gonna be very useful, did you wanna add to that at all?
No, that was, that was explained well.
Okay, so we'll make some decisions there and share that as we move forward and take some guidance, because we do know that even though we wanna have data-rich decisions, we don't want to not be teaching in our labs room. Staff mentorship, we were gonna take that off actually and because we use the state, that's totally already implemented. Mrs. Bart is one of our trainees under that program, we have multiple teachers that have been trained in that program already to mentor new staff. And she has some information that there may come a time, whether that's sooner or later, that that program may not be offered. So, we kept it on there thinking that we should create a team and create a formal mentorship program based on what we're already doing under the state, so that if the state doesn't offer that, the Richland Taylor district has their own. Is that kind of what you got over that, Jordy? Yes, okay.
Yes, exactly.
So, if you have any questions now or if you wanna look at it, you know, when something comes up, you're like, hey, I just wanna know more about this, feel free to call either Jesse or me and we'll explain it a little bit more. Jordy's always really good at backing me up, cause in my head, if we do it so much, I just like start giving the information. But so, to that you guys understand what this is for, this is required for the state to show our continuous improvement. If you remember at our review, we had multiple things we did really, really well at, we had a couple of things that we needed to work on, one of them was including a staff mentorship. So, those are the things that we need to show that we're continuing on every year and then we make sure that our innovation team and our professional development and everything lines up together to offer the professional development that we need. Would we like to go faster sometimes? Absolutely, but we always focus on baby steps, because if you go too fast and you're just skipping things and starting new things, you're bringing out teachers. So, we wanna get good at what we're already doing, good at, like really good at it.
Tell me more about, say it's create a formal process for student placement in differentiated groups based on data, what, what's our thought or direction on what we're heading for for differentiated groups then?
Yep, so the state wants us to work on MTSS and that's really just putting students in every level. So, the FastBridge that I was talking about will actually do that for us and will split up groups where they need to be. So the FastBridge that I was talking about will actually do that for us, and will split up groups where they need to be. Title will do the next level, which is more intensive, so the first level is the teachers are using it and differentiating within their classroom. After you do that multiple times, sometimes a student will still struggle, then the title teacher is coming in to help, and if not, then the title teacher is taking them out for intense instruction. Possibly during different times of the day where they can have individual instruction. Sometimes it's lined up where two or three kids can, are struggling with the same thing, they can go with the title teacher, sometimes it's completely individual.
May I add something?
You may, yep.
Then with the FastBridge program, you can document the interventions, and then that'll follow that student. So, if those interventions aren't working, then we move on to the next step with title. If that isn't working, then we have all our documentation ready to move into the next step, which we, do we need to do special ed testing? And we have our documentation right there, that we've done these interventions, these worked, these didn't.
So, the FastBridge is the formal process, or there's more to it?
That's just the program.
It's just the program for the data.
The process is the MTSS.
That's right, this is the, and the North Dakota MTSS.
FastBridge will provide us with the research-based interventions, and then it'll recommend like how intense it should be, should it be, you know, two times a week, maybe three times a week? For four weeks or whatever, and then after that you retest and then see if there's growth.
And it tracks all of that for you, that's, that's gonna be a big piece of it, is the documentation, all of that. Just keeping track of it in general, because you mean you got around twenty, thirty kiddos and.
And right now, we have, you know, star reading, math read, or math, star math, and then this over here, so they're like all separate, so this would be in one spot. Where all the data is, at least for that.
Thanks.
If other questions come out, or you look at something that needs some information, feel free to call us. Acolypic update, high school competed on March eighth at Beach, they did not place at that meet. Junior high school competed here on March twenty-second, did take first, it was their first time in a long time, very, very exciting. It was the largest acolypic competition we have hosted, we had nineteen teams, I don't, I maybe could have fit in maybe two more tables, possibly. I had to pull people from the crowd to help, so Ms. Marla Huff, who was sitting in the crowd, who was coming just to watch. I literally had to call her down and say, "We have someone without a coach," so they had a bus driver, but last minute a coach couldn't make it. So we had to throw some people into helping, and they did a fantastic job, so that was helpful, but nineteen teams, we had ground, it's all region four, so it's Grant County, South Hard, Hazen, Dickinson, Hope Christian. Mott Region, Flasher, Hebron, and then we had two Billings County, we had Prairie, and then we had Midora. We had Dickinson, Trinity, Beach, Kildare, Centristatin, Beulah, Hettinard, Glanville, Bellfield, New Salem, and then us, and there's probably four other teams in our whole region that didn't compete, so. Pretty awesome, it was pretty exciting, lots of excitement in the air. And then just the senior trip is April twelfth through the sixteenth, and they have enough money, and hopefully everything goes well, yeah, they have a driver.
So, back to junior high acolympics, we had, if you guys remember, we approved a coach for acolympics, so Ms. Bob.
Yes.
Coached the junior high, I don't know who's coaching, who was coaching the senior high?
Levon Bob did both.
She did both, okay.
She did both, and they actually study during working lunches, because everybody's in sports after school, and we know that our kids have to kind of cover everything. The teachers actually vote to put the top students who know the vast variety of information that's gonna be asked, and so that's how the teams are created. And then Levon Bob has worked with senior high in lunches and then junior high in lunches and studies, so I guess I feel it has made a difference, I feel if we continue with it.
I think it made a huge difference.
I mean.
Well, from what I saw, the junior high.
Yeah, just, just even the interaction between the kids, instead of throwing them into a competition, and then they're not as comfortable with each other, because they're all different grades. So it was really fun to see the interaction, to see who practices and who doesn't, because instead of stalling, you have people like working together and like, "Hey, we're holding this sort of this," and you know, so it's, it's pretty cool to watch, it's pretty interesting.
It's good. Anything else?
Nope.
Okay, let's roll into old business. We've got the collaborative bargaining.
Our verbiage isn't flawless anyway?
Yes, and this was approved by the RTA. Each full-time equivalent teacher under contract with the Richland-Taylor Public School District will receive eighty-two hundred dollars per school year to use towards a flexible benefit plan. Or a taxable cash benefit option. A part-time eligible teacher will receive prorated benefit contribution as his or her contract time. Benefit amounts are distributed consistent with an employee's annual salary election. So every year when we do the enrollment plan, teachers have an option of doing nine or twelve, and I think there's only one person who does nine. But, that is what that means. Teachers electing not to participate in the school district's health insurance plan must submit a satisfactory waiver of health coverage form before receiving any funds. So, this was put in to protect us, so that if they have insurance and they fill out that form, then it doesn't count against us. And then, of course, just separate tax consequences and contribution limits may exist depending on the teacher's designation, so. If you're taking the cash option and putting it into an annuity, there's restrictions on limits and stuff that they have to follow according to IRS regulations. Any questions?
I think that encompasses what our intention was, right?
And this would start the twenty-four, twenty-five.
So, basically, once we approve this.
We just update the.
Update the manual, but then does that close collaborative bargaining, bargaining, or is that already closed?
No, it'll be done, once we're done with this, it'll be done.
It will be.
Yep. So we need to.
So.
Okay. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the collaborative bargaining agreement that's read.
Okay, a motion, we have a second on that?
Awesome.
Okay, movement second, and any, any other discussion on it, I mean, I think it reads fine. Accomplishes the goal we wanted. Okay, if there's no other discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same side? Okay, motion carried, that is done. Thank you, Mr. Bouts, everyone worked on that. Let's see, operation maintenance.
So that, that addresses the certified staff as part of the collaborative, what about the classified, then?
That's everybody.
Okay, well then, maybe I do have a question then, because the language says every certi, every classified does it, and I'm sorry, because I.
This is the language that's in the master contract, that's with the teachers. We have a separate manual, it's classified manual, but we have to follow in here what the flexible benefit plan is for the classified. That's the language that goes into the classified.
Okay.
Because you can't have separate plans.
Right, right.
So, with this language, then that changes the language in the classified to this. This will be the exact verbiage, except it'll say classified employee. Does that make sense?
Does make sense, but the only concern I see is not having that, we all have that understanding, but the wording is still.
Well, you'll be approving the new classified manual for next year.
Oh, fair.
That'll be in there.
That'll be in there, yeah, fair. Okay, thanks for that color, appreciate it. Yeah, so this goes in with the collaborative bargaining?
Yes, the collaborative bargaining.
Right, right. Okay, operation maintenance.
Wait, we better vote on that?
What's that?
We better vote, we did.
We did.
In a second, did we?
I voted.
Okay.
You voted aye.
I voted aye, and then I started thinking more.
H A C project for Taylor. Bring you guys up to speed on this.
I did not get any response from anybody back today.
Oh, okay, I saw your emails.
Three lawyers. Response, and I looked up North Coast Central Code again, and it was, you know, they have that threshold of two hundred thousand dollars, so. If it's over that threshold, then that's where they're requiring you, that you need to get an architect or engineer, if it's underneath that, then.
Okay, so that requirement isn't there?
It is, if it's over two hundred thousand.
So it's over two hundred, then you're automatically gonna spend another, you know, eight percent of your project to pay an engineer and then go rebid it. Okay.
I, I did not find out my other question, my main question was, can we split the mechanical and the electrical apart? Because then we would be under, and initially it was together, but we had an unforeseen circumstance where we don't have enough power at TRE, so it needs to go from a one-phase to a three-phase transformer.
Wouldn't that be a more, a benefit for the whole school and not just this particular project?
Right, that's why I'm saying, I think it's legit to split it apart, because.
It is, we're basically updating an old electric service over there.
Right.
MDU is saying, you guys gotta upgrade this, kind of like almost in the football field.
So then with that, we also have to upgrade the electrical panel as well, and Mr. Goulster said that's twenty-two weeks out.
Yeah.
By the way, it wouldn't be.
So.
That's all.
So we have, we've approved this whole project, but, you know, and, and we signed an agreement with City Air. You know, on the one ninety-seven thousand, which included everything, electrical, mechanical, it was, it was a done deal. Well, they started looking into it, oh, they, I think they also underbid the electrical a little bit too, but. MDU said, "No, you guys need to upgrade this transformer, yada, yada," this other. So City Air came back and said, "Oh, we can't do it for that." I said, "Well, we kinda had a signed agreement," you know, like, "Nope, nope, MDU says they gotta upgrade this and that, so we're, we're gonna rebid it." Alright, let's do, I mean, I guess it is, so.
So they can't, so let's say we did all the MDU stuff separately, they still can't give us the same bid that they gave us?
They gave us a hundred, a new bid of a hundred and eighty-three, I asked them to split it up, so.
Right.
Right, but it's still higher than what the, it would still be higher than what the last bid is, was, even if we took the MDU stuff separately, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, there's like a fourteen thousand dollar difference.
Well, they're.
Right?
Yeah, they're fourteen thousand dollars lower right now, City Air is, but if you look at the, the three electrical bids.
Yeah, it was like twenty.
So the first one is sixty, sixty-four, sixty-six?
Isn't that the one that was in the initial?
So the total's gonna be forty-six, twenty-seven, seventy-nine, that up on top, right?
Right, right, but to me, the only extra, the additional work above and beyond what we thought, is the fourteen thousand seven fourteen for the new transformer.
Right, so if you took that out of the two twenty-nine, we're still not at one ninety-seven like they originally.
Right, you're still, you're still seventeen thousand dollars higher than you were before.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, we are, there's, so, I, I mean, I think what happened was, I think, I think it looks like, I think, you know, the guys from Denny's ended up raising their electrical bid overall. To City Air, and they.
Did Denny's come in and bid that, or did City Air just assume?
I.
With the initial.
I guess I don't.
With the initial quote, they, they just talked to Denny's and say, "Hey, we got this project, can you give me a quote on it?" And then they added in there.
Well, yeah, I would, I would think that Denny's bid it too initially, I don't know if it thought, so.
And then they, with us signing that agreement, they should have agreed with Denny's.
Yep, yeah, it didn't work.
For all intents and purposes, let's come to kick rocks.
So, I, I did get ahold of H A Thompson and some, so I don't know, I guess it's a, it's up to the board here, discussion to see what we, you know, how, how do we wanna proceed? But I did call H A Thompson, um. Talked to Devin. Book that coming out next week, Tuesday, come on, take a look at it, give us a bid.
As far as the two hundred thousand dollar threshold for need of an engineer, should we be separating so that we don't hit that, other than the mechanical?
Well, that's kind of what our question is, can we, can we just leave these split apart, treat them as two different projects?
You might have more success instead of, if I'm understanding it right, probably what happened here is a misunderstanding between Denny's and City, that cause. It's possible separate might be.
Yeah.
Might be more to manage, but it might be more manageable. But I think we figure out what H A Thompson says first, I think.
And, or.
You're out, you're not out anything.
Or do you guys have any other suggestions?
Weren't they the only ones that really gave us a bid on this project? I mean, there was that one other one, but they were like, one and a half times higher than H A Thompson was.
Yeah, yeah, they were, I mean, I, who knows, there could be someone, I don't know, I know you've mentioned Fairbanks before.
I thought they said they, that was too big of a project, so they wouldn't bid.
They'd not want.
I can ask them, I mean, if they want to look at it, but.
And on the electrical line too, we could, I mean, we could also, you know, solicit other bids too, I did mention it to Larry Goldsmith, and see if he and Casey Dresser wanna take a look at it, they're, they're local.
Yep.
Isn't there somebody in Taylor through this, doing electrical?
I can't imagine the electrical on this is.
Electrical, I'm sure.
Turn hall.
Yeah, there is somebody in Taylor.
Also, Bear Electric, which we've used.
Even.
Bear?
Who's the guy that killed here? I'm, I'm, the reason, that might be, my cousin works for him. Yeah, but I know they got a ton of people working for him.
Um, the ones that took over Jawoners and the Schneider Brothers.
No, I know they're usually pretty busy too.
I don't know, but yes, the Schneider Brothers, and they do work over here. Because they helped us with our crow's nest, the Schneider Brothers did. I don't know.
I mean, it depends on what you wanna. Yeah, I mean, absolutely, I agree.
I think it, like, get three at least would be.
Yeah. So I guess I, yeah, for, for John and I, what I, I guess what I'm hearing is we get some more bids, scope it out a little bit before we just go, go back and see.
Yeah, I guess my question then would be, why is it higher, you know, if we took out the extra work that wasn't there from the beginning? Well, did you say they upgraded from a single-phase to a three-phase?
Well, that's the, that's the work in, in Taylor that we need to be doing, I guess. So is that right, that schools ever had three, I guess I haven't.
You know, it's not a.
So with MDU, is that, MDU, we'd pay to do that, make it three-phase? They would bring three-phase to the school and then we'd pass it to them.
Yeah, MDU's their supply, like a transformer and all that, but. You know, your electrician still has the, you know, poor, poor concrete pad, set the transformer, and then wire it on there into your main service, and then go inside and put a new.
New box.
New main.
Sure.
Service panel, so that's what I'm talking about. Just like, I see a twelve hundred amp?
That's great.
So there's, that's a huge service.
Taylor School, that's basically. Can't imagine we need three-phase, I'd like another opinion on that.
Existing transformers still at twelve hundred amps, three-phase. Existing transformers still at twelve hundred amps, three-phase full transformer.
That's MDU saying that, right?
Yeah. Yeah, it's MDU. There's more to it than what we're seeing, I'm sure. You know. Cause it was with MDU and CTE.
Okay.
They also say single-phase transformers plural, or the one-three-phase singular transformers. You know, they got multiple, they're pulling off a multiple legs and it's.
Is it that the existing equipment is just old? Upgrade?
Again.
Old to do three-phase if you're upgrading?
No, no, I don't think that's correct, I think that's just what they want to.
That's what they want to do with power this.
They want to be the power of the school.
Right.
Yeah. You know, but yeah, basically, yeah, upgrade it. Okay, well, we'll keep working on it, I mean. This is gonna, this is gonna be a small project yet, but I mean, it's hoping it doesn't sound like we're on a, a deadline for it. Okay, MDU meter project, that is for the Richthud project?
Yeah, I just got that. So I will need board action on that one.
That was Denny's as well.
Uh, okay, yes, I did see that one. Yeah, they're very similar looking for. So that's a twelve thousand dollar. But we talked about this a few meetings ago, this was a.
Yeah, we don't really.
This is the situation where it's gonna save us.
This is to change the meters, where it's gonna save us money.
Money on what they're charging us for electricity, so.
And we should probably table the other proposal, I put board action under there.
On, oh, on the, on the table, so.
So just.
Or, or do we need that?
Should we just make a motion to seek further bids?
Or if you want to, yeah, I suppose to do that too, however you want to do it.
Let's do that.
But we should do some action on it, cause I put action.
I'd make a motion that we seek more bidding bids on the electrical side of this and.
And mechanical.
And mechanical, yeah.
Whole project.
Yep.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, so on the Taylor HVAC project, we've got a motion and a second to seek more mechanical and electrical bids on the project. Any other discussion then? Okay, so all in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same side? Okay, we'll just, that motion carries.
I'll make a motion to accept the quote for the MDU meter project.
Forty. Richardson?
For the football field.
Football field, okay. Okay, we got a motion on the Richardson transformer meter project, a second on that?
I'll second.
Second by Shannon, any other discussion on that? That was a little more straightforward. And these here, okay, say, say, John, all in favor, say aye. Oppose, same side? Anybody who cares? Uh, okay, moving on, elementary principal search.
As you know.
You get a storm or what?
I'll tell you a second.
Hold on to your hats.
Okay, elementary principal search, where are we, what is? Guess I'm a little, I'm a little behind on that one, what's our timeline?
Um, I believe the closing date is April eighteen, I'm pretty sure. And so far, we have gotten three applicants.
Sir, wait, look at those like we did with the superintendent search.
Yep, I can send them out to you, um, it's kind of follows, since we have three or more applicants, it follows the same guidelines as. Um, the names have to be kept confidential until you decide who you're gonna hire, so.
Okay, and did we decide, decide on a hiring committee? We have not. Well, you better do that. Cause I know, I know we talked about it last time and. Where we settled on that, so, uh, to refresh your memory, um. Whether it's the full board, whether it's a hiring committee, whatever we do on this search. Um, because it's a, it would be a, a board-directed hiring committee, like I said, or the full board. Either way, you're subject to open meeting loss, okay? So if it's a board-directed committee, still a public meeting, you know, on, on the interviews, uh, looking at the candidates, whatever that you want to do there. So, uh, I mean, so keep that in mind, but I would guess I would ask the, the board, you know, what your guys' wishes are if you want to. If we want to hire a principal just as a board or have two board members and a, and a committee, is what we've done in the past. And, and hire that way, so I guess what, what are your guys' thoughts?
If you do the committee, it's still subject to board vote anyway, right?
Yep. Uh, I believe so, you take the committee's recommendation.
And then.
Just clarify it at a board meeting.
Yep, right.
Okay.
But you discuss all the applicants at the board meeting?
Well, would you?
That's what we did last time.
Did we? Went through the, the committee went through the process, went rationale.
Right, and we looked at the, all the comments and everything else and discussed that.
And then they gave the recommendation and then the vote was in. So. And I mean, it kind of, the committee, I think, simplifies hiring and pulls in your, you know, your staff. Cause you can have your, your superintendent, your principal, uh, we did a couple of teachers last time.
And when you checked on it, we can, we can all sit in on those too, whether it be Zoom or.
Yes. Yep, it, it'll be an open meeting.
Yeah.
It, it will be an open.
As long as we don't participate.
Well, we could even participate, actually, for our listeners.
It'd be an open meeting.
Right.
Or it's subject to open meeting laws, but.
So just for point of discussion, you brought up having the current admin, the administration involved in the committee. Well, would, can we require Mr. Ziegler to be on that?
Absolutely.
Outside of that, since two of the administration are.
Why they, Mr. Ziegler, I'd be surprised if he wouldn't want to be here.
Right.
I think we'd want to know that, yeah.
Yeah.
I think he would.
Yeah, I think, absolutely.
Definitely, we'd include him.
You know, so for instance, we could have Mr. Ziegler and, you know, Dr. Vogel be on. We could, we could select a few staff members that we'd like to have on. Amber could be part of it, committee and, and two board members. Like the board, you see, assemble the whole board many times.
Yes, I'd like to discuss the role itself a little bit, um, you know, we've advertised it as elementary principal. The current, uh, position was elementary principal with the career advisor. I've, uh, made some phone calls and know a little more on that career advisor piece. But I think before we determine a committee, we probably want to clarify just exactly what we're hiring for. That.
What did we advertise?
It was, so it was advertised as elementary principal, however, the description said was what the current job is.
Okay, so the duties are listed as principal and career advisor? Okay.
That career advisor position, I can share the information with the board. It, it is not, does not require any form of certification. Basically, anybody can do that, in fact, some schools use people who are not, uh, working at the school at all. So, um, for us, that career advisor piece, if I understand right, and, uh, Mr. Bellis, if you want to clarify for me. But we do use that position to meet some of the criteria for our counseling, uh, needs for.
For CTE, right?
So we're required by Century Code to have a counselor for three hundred.
Correct, and you can use part of that career advisor to cover.
Right.
The, you have to have, what is it, so many, seventy percent or thirty or, I don't remember what that is.
It's thirty, the number I got was thirty percent.
Yeah.
Of that, so nine.
Can be used towards your, yeah.
Right, so since we have slightly over three hundred in K through twelve.
And we have one counselor.
And we have one counselor.
And that's where the career advisor comes in and picks up, so we're.
So that we meet that requirement, right? So, but that said, I guess my question is discussion, I don't know as though, I don't think, I, I don't think from what I've researched that the career advisor. Uh, using this elementary principal is probably the best way to handle that. I guess my points there would be, I think that having an administration in a building full-time is wise. And the more I learned about this career advisor, I'd really like somebody that to be offered to, someone that just wants to do it. And I don't know if while we're trying to interview for an elementary principal, and normally the people that you find that would make good elementary principals doubt that career advisor is something that they really. I, I doubt that that's something that they're like, I'm passionate about, want to do it. So we can still meet the requirements and, you know, just find really whoever in the staff. It's a, it's an endorsement and, uh, really you can get a provisional on it, start taking the, the work towards it. The, the career technical pays for the, the cost of getting the endorsement. It does not reimburse like it does some of the other positions. So I just think it'd be good for us to at least define whether we're going to want that piece, cause that, that in my mind, for sure affects who, who you would pick from that applicant pool and possibly even who, who does the interviewing. And it might be a piece that we want answered prior to that selection of how do we handle that, uh, career advisor piece if we need to.
So back up a little bit, you said there's no formal education requirements for the career advisor piece?
In fact.
What, what do you know about Jesse?
A career ma, advisor must have a bachelor's degree in any field.
Correct.
And at least five years employment history.
And interestingly enough, they even prefer, and they, talking to the state on this. His name, Mark. Anyway, it has a, a statement in there too, that three of the five years of work history should be outside of education, which is interesting. Uh, the intent of this career advisor piece was around the whole career and technical education piece to try to get more input to our students. Um, so, but most schools have not adhered to that where the requirement, three years. And they haven't pushed that through the endorsement from Leonard Daniels.
So Jesse, weren't you working on a, a, is it a counselor piece or a career advisor piece?
So the, the, my time in Bismarck was spent for the, the endorsement that Damian was talking about with the career advice. The career counseling part of it is what I do at the high school with like the testing and the test setup and the scholarship requirements and things like that. So the career advisor is more in the career, the CTE side of things, if you will, and then the career counseling is more the academic piece to it at high school. If that makes sense, or I can elaborate.
Okay.
Anything else?
Okay, so there's two, there's two pieces to this, but neither one of them require a special degree?
No, you're wrong, the counselor does require a special degree. A counselor is actually a master's degree, but you at least have to have that endorsement on your teacher's certification. And so the career technical money does reimburse a portion of the salary of a counselor that is also doing career counseling. But they have to have that endorsement at least, and usually that should take a master's degree to get that endorsement. Now our state has gotten to where they'll give provisional endorsements pretty readily, even without completion of masters. But there is that distinction between a career counselor and this career advisor. Career advisor, you can have one of the paras, any of the, any of the staff can, can do that position.
Wonder if this could be a little more confusing.
So are, are we doing, right now, Jesse's doing both career counseling and career advising?
My, my position was posted elementary principal, career counselor.
Career counselor. But you also end up doing career advisory.
Which is what the training was for, or the, the class, the course, yep.
Of course, you're taking a career advising, not career counsel.
Correct. I don't know if there is training for career counseling, cause to me, that's just the kind of stuff I learn.
The training for career counseling is you enroll in a counseling master's program.
Even as a career counselor?
As a career counselor, you have to have your master's degree in counseling plus the CTE certification. Then you can get reimbursement for part of their salary. For a career advisor, you simply have to have a four-year degree and the endorsement, and it does not get reimbursed.
Gotcha.
So essentially, we don't have a career counseling position?
We do, we get reimbursed. No, we get reimbursed from CTE funds for, um, it was about s- thirty-five percent of our counselor.
Currently, we do?
Currently. That was, well, it's, it's a year lagging, if I'm understanding this right, so that was twenty-twenty-two, three numbers. And they gave me, did they give me a raw number? No, they gave me a raw, actual dollars for the business.
So, so what do we, what do we, are we getting reimbursement for?
Well, Sarah's listed on, on CTE.
Oh, yeah, that's Sarah's position.
She, she works a lot with like five through eight on the career side.
But that's not.
Well, and what you're saying is part of my concern too, is whether we're doing what we're saying with the reimbursement as well.
That's not the way it should be. Because she would not be doing the career, is she doing any career counseling? So that's you doing the career advisor.
Correct, correct, yep.
So she's focusing all on SEL, so there should be, she should not be listed as. That for reimbursement.
Meanwhile, it's beneficial to us to have a career counselor that is partially reimbursed, if it can be listed. Right now, the career technical monies that we're taking advantage of is the, about six thousand for a business, eighty-eight hundred for tech and engineering. And then the career counseling. I shouldn't say right now, that was the last year. So it's not major amounts of money, you know, I was kind of surprised at as much as the state talks about this when it comes right down to it for.
I'm surprised if the state didn't catch that.
Fair enough, yeah. And this was one phone call, one conversation, my notes, I mean, certainly if you want to chase and clarify. But anyway, back to the point is. At least clarification of what we want to do with this, this position.
So in all reality, for principal and career counselor. We have a master's in counseling.
Yeah, to do that, you're looking for a person that has a endorsement in both, principal, and has a master's degree and has a principal endorsement on there.
Right.
You know, through PTSB, no, is it ESPB? I get those confused. You know, through PTSB, no, is it ESPB? I get those confused. ESPB, the Education Standards and Practice Board, and you'd also be looking for that same person to have an endorsement in counseling, a second master's. Most people will not invest a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in their education to get both of those endorsements. I mean, it'd be tough anyway.
So what do we need? Administration, what do we need?
What do you need as far as why?
What do you have to have?
No, I mean, what 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 do we need to fill our 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 needs here for teachers? I mean, we need a career advisor, we need a principal, I mean, I'm sure we have other needs, but what's?
I guess looking at it the way it was, why it was done that way was to meet the requirements of having one counselor for, you know, there's three hundred and forty kids. So then the career advisor part was someone who could just do the endorsement, and then um not have to worry about the rest of the stuff, however he didn't get reimbursed. Before, I think we did have Jan listed as the career counselor, but she had the counseling
Already.
degree already, so then we could get reimbursed for that, and then she left, and then I think that's how.
Scott took it back and he had his counseling.
And he had his counseling as well, so then we could get reimbursed, and then.
Advisor, and so no reimbursement.
Yeah, so.
So do we have to have another counselor for the amount of students we have?
Well, it's one for every three hundred um based on, you know, splitting the the school, elementary and the high school, so.
So it's the account is split?
No.
Or because that person's overseeing both, right?
Right.
So then, do both those numbers go down?
Right, so yeah, exactly, I'm saying if it was three hundred in the elementary.
Sure.
You know, you're gonna need one for there.
Right.
And I haven't looked at your numbers, so I don't know what we're at.
I had emailed the state and they said technically we need one point zero six, so seven counselors if you're including that coun- the career counseling in that, so.
So if it's separated.
If you're could, if you're including the career advisor.
Right.
So if you have, if you have an advisor, then we're fine. And that was state directed years ago.
Yeah, I guess I'm looking for direction from administration to what you guys need and what you guys would like to see this being too.
Well, the advisor does multiple things, so would you say you spend what, six hours a week?
Yeah, yeah.
On average, sometimes less, sometimes more.
It was a seasonal.
Right, and we tried to work it so that anything that could be done without traveling, three main years excluded. So any paperwork, any online Esser or ESSA, everything like that you did there, it was top of the pile.
It was a student meeting for just via email.
So the career advisor um does graduation worksheets, and it's a, it's the double tri- triple check system to make sure nothing's missed is what it is. Um they also do the state ESSA for the students to track all of their information, and then they do the are you ready? Uh they go into the classroom, they go through with the students with the are you ready, do you wanna expand on that or?
Um yeah, it's kind of like an all all, like an information hub for them, like I have a curious of their, whether looking career or college, you know, to sure you can use Google, but Google's an endless pit of information, you can get lost real quick, where are you ready is a little bit more specific, and there's a scholarship search, it basically preps them, so there's a scholarship search where they can create their own portfolios, they can save this information, so they don't have to go back and re-dig and find this information again. They can see colleges they're interested in, programs they're interested in, uh on that page too, just like every website would have, you know, program guys, of courses they would need and things like that. Um there's also the pre-work built into it of resume building, cover letter writing, uh interview skills, things like that. Um I've shared with some of the high school teachers, had some test prep components to it as well, so it's an ACT, ASVAB, um acting place, there are a lot of just just prepping these kiddos, so they're the first time they take these big tests, it's the first time to give them that exposure. Are you ready is growing into a, a component of are you ready is called work-based learning, which is basically, basically a job scheduling, being able to build connections with with uh companies and and get time spent in in person for that hands-on learning. Um there's, they're still kinda fine tuning that, I wish the system was a little bit different where students could see all their options versus I could see their options and I have to tell them. But that's a growing compartment, uh part of it too. Um there's a, there's a ton of like interest inventories, you know, so for kids who don't know what in the world they wanna do, they've never thought about it, you know, this would be more your middle school kiddos or the last thing on their mind, um even even freshmen and sophomores, but they take these surveys, they're called interest inventories, just geared on what they like, who they are, their personality, and um just gives them some ideas, and then from there, you know, then they really just dive into the searches of following the path. This is something you really like to do yesterday, okay, no, you know, delete it, move on to the next part, but it's kinda just an all-in-one component of 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 that that career and college planning as well.
And all good stuff, but the more I understand of this and what you just heard there, I believe that position belongs with someone that wants to do it in this building, cause that's the the target audience. And so, you know, the more I understand it, you got someone that's overseeing, say, study halls as we called them in our days, or they call it now opportunity times, is that that wants to, that just fits better with our program, you don't have the principal driving back and forth to to handle that, you know, in this building for for those people.
So would that position, if you do that, would that be a full-time position?
That's probably what we'd be talking about, or at least duties in my mind that keeps the individual in tailored.
Like duties like what?
Well, I, a lot of times with a principal doing some sort of form of teaching works well. I guess my thought around having an administrator in the building the whole time is that the current setup, I mean, first of all, you just say part-time principal, that that really makes sense, when you consider uh students that age, as far as discipline and or other initiatives, things you're trying, it needs to be in the moment. You run into a deal with a a student that's a third grader, and well, this this didn't go right in the hallway, well, just wait until the principal comes back from career advising in Richertan, and let's talk about this, well. But that age, if you don't handle it in the moment, normally it just doesn't get handled. Um I think we let what worked in the past due to the people that had, you know, Mr. Bowen had his counseling that, and we we just stuck with it instead of asking the questions about what's best for our students or staff.
So do uh, but so if we go this way, say, okay, elementary principal stays in Taylor, that's it, done, okay, you do that, do you put other duties on that principal at that school? Or is it a full-time principal job and that's that's it, end of story? I mean, I, and I'm looking for input from our administration, cause I don't know, guys.
I think you, I'm not gonna comment, so I think you should talk to Dr. Z.
That that there's really would be a big piece of that, you know, how if he's the superintendent, we're gonna hold accountable for certain things, that that input would be valuable. However, the time constraints, that could be a challenge as well.
Depends on what we do in the future, I guess, I have two other duties. So I have the library degree that I carry, and then I do the standards for all the state. Um Lavon's very well-trained, she helps train and if we need another person, but um I will be honest, I am not out in the building a ton. I go over when I need to, I communicate when I need to, and we do a lot of things on shared folders. Um I do all the public, the state library policies, and I do up all the updating, all book checks.
For Taylor?
For the district.
Okay.
Um and now it's time to update our policies again, and so, and then I have to make sure that we're covering our standards and go through that, and if not, then they, I have to say these are the standards you have to finish the rest of the year or the next quarter or whatever, um help with designing that if I need to. Um it kinda depends on who's in there at the time and who switches, sometimes it's a lot of work, sometimes it's less work, but it's all those other duties, and then I also have fifth and sixth.
So is there a situation where maybe we could use, I don't call it an assistant principal, call it a five-six principal that splits some of those other things that are running youth in or whatever, um that can take some of that off the plate to make it doing this, what you're supposed to be doing, you know what I mean, like?
Right, right, and I will say like if something happens with behavior or something else um is going on here, everything gets thrown on the back burner, that's just how it is in principle, something happens, you deal it.
Right, but you're in this building. Right, but you're in this building all the time versus being out of the building
Most of the time, yeah. Yeah, most of the time.
At the other school, that's the thing that's difficult that I see being an issue possibly.
And I work my meetings around my time.
Sure, yeah.
But if I could, Dr. Wilber, where were you going with this, what what does determine what we want for the college?
How many students are we having, what are we having tailored for students?
If I could finish, guys, what what, where were you going with, I was, I'm lost on the conversation we were having with what fits well for elementary principal and and what you were just talking about with your duties.
I was just saying that, you know, over here with more students, I have all these other duties, and with that position, we're talking about cutting duties, and then we have to find someone to take on those duties. So I mean, we just have to find someone to take on those duties.
What duties?
The career advisor part.
If we're trying to take career advisor away, then we need a career advisor here. You know, which I mean, I don't.
The need on that is, well, right, to meet the counselor of three hundred, another option for that, we don't need, just to clarify, we don't need a career advisor. If if we're meeting what we need to for our students' needs in, we don't need a career advisor, is that is that true?
We do have to have, and I was, it was associated by the state on our first school improvement.
Oh, it was on our school improvement?
Not this last one, it was on previous, we passed this one because we have kept it.
Was it the career advisor, or was it just what we were doing in terms of career preparation on the school improvement?
Can you, do you remember, was it specific, because it was just covering those duties, is all I remember.
Or was it?
It was a specific counselor advisor. We just had to make sure those duties were covered and aligned to someone.
But if we didn't have a career advisor, we wouldn't have enough counseling coverage.
But you could do that with a part-time counselor.
Sure, no, I know, but that's what I'm saying, like.
That's all I'm saying, that's another option, right, is that.
There's so many of them are on.
I know of two that are ready to go.
I I, this is my feelings, your disciplinarian issues are tenfold over here compared to pre-K through fourth.
Well, again, Shannon, what does what's going on here have to do with what?
No.
Why are we comparing justified by comparison?
We're not.
What's going on in Richertan?
We're not, we're just duties, I'm looking at duties as a principal.
But I don't necessarily agree with you that they're worse, because there could be, there may not be, you might have more of them over there. They they could be more severe here, but I'll bet you got more of them over there than you do here, it's probably just the severity of what you have is where you might see the difference.
Correct.
But regardless whether it's, there's something to be said in any position where if you take someone to your next person above you, say a kid goes to the principal, they're gonna listen to the principal probably better than they are the teacher, just because it's somebody of higher authority. And if you don't have that person in the building, when that thing's going on, especially at a younger age, are they really gonna be able to figure out what they did wrong? I mean, I, is it, is it a full-time job if you take that position away? I mean, do you, can you do forty hours a week of just an elementary principal at that school?
Yeah.
That's, I guess, the biggest question right there.
Right, but I also think that could be avenues, if you guys wanted to go the route of finding something in-house, like a responsibility in-house.
Well, sure, yeah, if there's something that you could do there, but.
Presence is still there.
Yeah, absolutely, and then like you said, something could get moved to the back burner if there's an issue that's gotta be addressed at the time, but if you're not.
Title one coordinator.
But if you're not there, you can't do it.
Title one coordinator and a career advisor, title one is a ton of work.
We just create a new position?
You gotta meet student needs, however, you have to remember that every person you hire takes away from your teachers' pay. So every raise you have.
Well, I'll tell him that, because if we keep headcount the same, how does it, how does it take away from teacher pay, we keep saying that.
Just budget-wise, I know I'm not. Because down the road, your percentage divvies out evenly.
But if your headcount's the same, how does it take away, especially that statement, take away from teacher pay?
Because.
So you added more set, your your budget fits.
Yeah, yeah, so you have to put along your percentage.
You you may not have enough money, that's what she's saying.
Cause you get the same amount of money every year.
Well, along that lines, I would tell you this, this this career advisor position, if that's what we're talking about, taken away, it doesn't affect the budget at all. We didn't get reimbursed for it, nor are we required to have it per se.
Well, I think we're required to have it.
Well, if if it's in the school improvement plan, but yeah, I question Zach language of that.
I mean.
You know, it might have been in the school improvement plan, I could see, we we just saw the the continuous improvement plan here, I could see language along the lines of need improvement in career preparation, right? Now, whether career advisor helps with that, which it does, as Mr. Patterson said, but I don't know, it's like prescribed, I'd be surprised if prescribed you have to have a career advisor. And I think the career advisor has its benefits, but just, I mean, I'll say it again, having an elementary principal doing that is that's just a really odd mix of.
You have to have one or the other.
One or the other, I know.
Either the career counselor.
Right, that's that's a good point.
The career advisor, if you happen to have a counselor who can do both.
Correct, right.
Then seventy percent of their time, seventy percent has to be um towards SEL, and then the other thirty has to be towards helping those nine through twelve grade students.
Correct.
And that needs to be, you know, you need to send in a schedule.
And percentage-wise with one counselor, is it capable with one, cause I always thought we had to have the one plus the third.
Not with the whole.
Right.
But there's lots of schools that are one point zero zero eight-three, you know, and the state doesn't come after you, hey, you need to, you know, cause it's hard to find conversation.
Well, I'll challenge that, there's there's counselor, but we got how many working on their degree that we could get provisional license within the school, I think two, so. Sometimes we're making statements here that are making this more challenging, like we're gonna cut pay and.
How about was difficult, is that better for you?
No, I I I don't think it was was difficult or is.
Okay, so what are what are the board's wishes here, I I mean, are we gonna make a a decision tonight on this, or do we need to research this further?
So what are the numbers in there?
Skill-wise?
One forty-one.
How many?
One four one.
And how many?
I just have the students, I don't know.
Is that pre-K too?
Correct.
I'm just trying to, so if we hire a principal, and then you're gonna give him other duties, I want, I need to know what the other duties are before we start hiring. Because we're not just gonna make up a something to fit so we hire a full-time principal there.
But on the same note, I don't think it's fair to have that principal out of the school either.
Okay, I I'm okay with that, but what are they gonna do? What is their job description then, cause before we hire somebody, we're gonna have to know what their job description is. And we're not gonna make up stuff, just make up, so just just to put somebody in there.
Well, I mean, I guess when I asked if if he thought he could take forty hours doing just the position of principal, and he said yes, to me that seems like it's a a position that takes a lot of time.
If you take forty hours for a hundred and forty-one kids, and I'm just using that to just, and then we're gonna take.
Hundred eighty-six.
Hundred and eighty-six, and that's full-time.
And like I suggested, what if we get a assistant principal that bounces between both buildings, if that person needs to come over here, whatever it happens to be.
Yeah.
I don't think that that necessarily over there should be considered just a part-time position.
Well, I'll remind you guys that when we were hiring the superintendent, we had a lot of talk about superintendent slash principal, and the statement there was that there's times where the principal can use assistance from the superintendent, superintendent is housed in this building, so as far as your comparison of one eighty-six to one forty-one, you've got two administrative staff here, right, you got one over there. And I guarantee you there's circumstances where the teachers and others who either maybe don't want to or that are put into a position where they're having to do administrative work in Taylor. Now, as far as extra duties, unfortunately, what we'd have to do there, either get Mr. Ziegler involved, would be typically what you'd have is your superintendent advise a little more, okay? Hear the conversation and then look at what duties are needed and make a recommendation. And make a recommendation.
I mean, cause we just, if we're gonna hire, we, this guy's got nobody's gonna do.
Correct.
This new principal, we have to know before we can even interview.
And that was my intent with this discussion was have that for the interview committee and the candidates. Because when we have this, well, maybe, well, maybe you could, that creates confusion and problems, so.
So do we want, do we wanna get a recommendation from current and future administration on on what this job description should be? Uh, I mean, we got that quickly, uh, we're closing this on April eighteenth. And therefore we need to start interviewing, you know, then a few days after that, I mean, I would, I would guess, you know, I don't wanna drag our feet on this, right?
I did hear a response around title one, what's the concerns of title, what are we struggling with?
Well, there's lots of paperwork, you know, every five years you do the monitoring, but. Now there's stuff in place where you can just, every year, you should just get in the habit of. Everybody putting their stuff in there, and then when it comes time to the next. Monitoring, it's all there, we don't have to sit and run around and try and figure everything out.
Who's currently doing the title one, do we have a designated position just for that or not?
Well, the title one teachers and the administration, I mean, basically the administrator would be the title one coordinator. Making sure that, you know, stuff is happening.
So that's something our elementary principals expected to be involved in already, okay.
Do you guys have, does this board have an opinion on deciding whether. Our elementary principal just remain. In Taylor only and and not do any career advising, I mean, is that a separation that you guys wanna dictate?
Yeah, that'd be my preference.
You know, and then at some point you gotta say, okay, well, what, you know, what other duties is assigned, do we wanna add to a. To an elementary principal, I mean, I I think that's still on the table, I think that still needs to be on the table.
Well, you need, you have other things you need in Taylor, you know, maybe that's your person who can help.
But the other thing I think we need to look at too is, okay, so we can, you know, certainly grab information from Mr. Bowles. From Mr. Patterson, should we ask the teachers in the survey what they think? I mean, should we say, you know, whether it's a, what do you need, what do you need help with, as far as administration goes, what what's missing, what would help, what would? You know, I mean, there's a lot of in- input, I'm sure that's there, that we could get from him as well.
How about beans were so close to crunch time, why don't we, why don't we just hire a principal? And do the career advisor for this year? And then when we have our new administrator in, and then our principals can sit down and with their teachers. And look through what we need, and maybe we need to put another. Principal part-time over here and then that way we keep it, you know?
Do you do you remember when they started income tax, that it was supposed to be a temporary thing?
What's that?
When they started income tax, that was supposed to be temporary?
Well, you can, you can make.
Alls I'm, alls I'm saying is, when you meet somebody in that position, they might just be stuck there.
I mean, we're not gonna be.
Well, let's not let crunch time make us make that decision, so.
I don't think it would be a bad decision.
No, it would be, because I'm telling you, this position doesn't work well. And now we have an opportunity to go on hire, and whilst we're hiring and interviewing for this position, and then we tell somebody, oh yeah, you're doing this career advisor. Yeah, I don't wanna do that.
What if we find somebody that wants to do it?
If you would, then perhaps, but I would keep that career advisor piece open, anybody can do it within the step. One of us could do it, right?
I'm not disagreeing with that.
So, that piece, if we wanna check that box of career advisor, that could just, that's as easy as handling it, just take the interest survey, who wants to? Be involved in doing some career advising, I certainly wouldn't pin tie the career advising, and especially. The piece there where the career advisor has to travel to. To the building here and be out of out of Taylor.
How hard is it, how fast can we gather information from staff over at the other school? I think that's an important piece of input, I mean, we can sit here and talk round and round about it until we're blue in the face, but. Until we get all the information, we don't know, we're not there.
Yeah, that's a problem, sitting here we don't know.
Right.
So, it's a good job, well, but we were elected to make decisions, and if we see something that's not working.
Jesse, what would you, if you were a full-time principal over there and that's all you did, what what would? You know.
I think title comes in a little bit, that that's been my, one of my biggest learning curves this year, was just all the title, cause I came from districts with that. Fancy title coordinator where you sit back and.
Right.
Be, you know, I I created a walkthrough schedule to be in class, or so I can be in class a little bit more, just a little bit more, and and engage in those components.
Well, we can, Jesse, is there a need you saw in the school of like, boy, if we had just somebody doing this, even part-time teaching this, or taking this, this? This is overloaded?
Something like super specific to teach.
Perhaps, or any other?
That's, teaching is not a good idea with the principal, because then you're gonna run into the same situation that you were just talking about, whether. When they're out of the building, when they're teaching, then there's gonna be something where.
At least they're in the building when we're teaching there.
I understand, but you're talking about what's best for kids, it's not pulling the principal out every time.
So, thank you for validating my point that that's not a good practice. But I'm saying is that if the board needs to have a additional. Consideration of duties for this principal, I'd like that he's to have that input.
As far as content, I don't, I don't have any more specifics about teaching.
I just wonder if something was on top of your mind.
I guess my suggestion is we hire a principal, and then we work from there. There's a few things, I was kinda writing down, you know, a career advisor, title one coordinator, maybe assistant principal duties. Whatever it happens to be. If we had one more person, it sounds like we could keep it pretty darn busy. Um, with multiple things. So, I I would prefer just to see right now, a principal. Um, and then we can make adjustments and stuff from there. Because when's the last time, if ever, was it just a principal position, or has it always been a hybrid position?
I think once there was a full-time principal over there, Mr. Buggman.
Vetman.
Other than that, it's been part-time. Cause I mean, just you you just look at your numbers, I mean, you have to look at your numbers and be fiscally responsible too, and that's the crappy part about.
But what's the best thing for our students, for our staff?
That's what I was gonna say, that's the crappy part about it, so, we just gotta look at, so if we hire a full-time principal, and then we go out and we hire. You know. Somebody else and take away. I I I I see the need to do this, I just don't know, we don't have the time to do the need. But if we can, we could, I'll make, we can make it work.
I mean, I think we've got the time, if if we hire a principal, and then we figure out the career advisor piece with. Whether it is the principal, or it is somebody else in whatever, but then having a, whether, okay, so say, let's just say even the. The principal over there does do career advisor, okay, just let's say that's the same thing, then we need. An assistant principal, because we need to have an administrator over there. And then we could also have that assistant principal take some duties away from Dr. Vogel as well, that she's having to do. They could be a title one coordinator, there's, I mean, there's.
When we interviewed for superintendent, we also talked about that, so when the career advisor came over here, that the superintendent would go over there. And that way they would be in the building also, which would give you somebody there, but. Yeah, it.
You know, as far as the the compensation and that and keeping that, the, having a principal be a career advisor is an expensive career advisor, by the way. And then, since, I mean, that career advisor piece, you could probably find one of the paras that's interested in doing it, offer up, there's no. It's not like a certified staff where they have to follow the salary schedule, so therefore you could offer up three grand to have this extra duty and you can follow.
They have to have a four-year degree.
Four-year degree, correct.
So, a pair of.
Most paras don't have four years.
Most of them.
Okay, fair enough.
Just saying.
I don't know, I might should get a variance on that, we seem to get a variance endorsement on any of them, so. But anyway, I'm pretty sure finding that career advisor piece would be, you got a lot of optionality there.
I can get on board with with not tying the two together, I mean, I'm I'm certainly okay with that, and and. You know, so you hire just a principal. Uh, but at some point, there are gonna be other duties as assigned, I mean, that's always in the front print, right?
Yeah.
Other duties as assigned, you know, and there may be some other things that are needed over there, I mean, I, as far as a career advisor. In in this building, um, would it be hard to fill, I I don't know, I wouldn't think this team would be hard.
The teachers right now, um, I already have, like, we have a couple people that have been helping out Jesse because they're in the classroom. And they helped out John Barry and they helped out Scott, so if they take on two career things, we count that under the career advisor. So that he's out of the building less, or whoever's there is out of the building less, um, if we have, um. Like a career fair, and if there's a teacher that wants to take their students anyways, we count that and we just say what seniors and juniors wanna go with. Not just that class, so we already, we already help out, I I will say that it's too much to go without the advisor part. It's it's just too much.
Yeah, we need somebody.
We have to have someone.
You know, the question is, can we find somebody for that piece, I mean?
So, staff right now, um, we keep it very efficient so that we, everyone is fulfilled. Full-time, and I would say that they're quite busy, other than what we can line up with their courses, I don't feel like another staff in our building could take that off.
Okay.
I could relook at it, I could relook at it, I mean, the schedule's done for next year and, but. I mean, just for the reports that have to be done, like, um, Jesse's just about to start ESSA, and that's, I mean, that's seniors, juniors, sophomores, freshmen. So, and that's all their binders, so like the homeroom teachers already do all the binder work for the student advisor. And we have to have it done monthly, we put in certain, you know, the students are putting everything in those binders to meet those requirements. And then the advisor goes through it, makes sure they meet the requirements, see what they still need, and then documents what they need for the state, so I mean, there's just a lot of things we can't go without.
Okay.
And then you're talking about your state scholarships, which our students have been doing really good, and yes, they're making harder, it's getting harder for them to qualify. And we're continuing to upper game to make sure that we can continue to qualify, but. Um, what that looks like down the road, I can't promise, you know, but. That's important, those, and not just that, but other scholarships, getting kids on board with the scholarships, making sure they have it, making sure they're getting them in. We want our students to get as much as possible for that support.
So what are we offering for this position that I saw earlier?
I don't know.
What's that headed there?
It doesn't, it doesn't change now. Okay. Do we want to, you know, take this under further advisement, I mean, we don't have a lot of time, but.
Well, I think this is a discussion that we have to include, Mr. Ziegler, not to.
Okay.
Somehow.
Somehow, how do we do that?
Fantastic question, but I think it's something that we need to at least talk to him.
I agree, he needs to be a partner, it's such big.
Yeah.
You're hiring your administration, I mean.
Yeah, he's hired on his team.
He should be on the hiring committee too.
He's hiring his team here, so.
So are you talking about now, you mean, should you call him, or are you looking at a future meeting, like how fast you're looking?
Well, I mean, I I don't know if you call it now, I mean, yeah, but if you wanna do a special meeting, that'd be probably.
But you may have to have a special meeting, you know.
Quarter to ten there.
Uh, what's the day, the tenth? You know, you gotta have a special meeting by Monday, normally. It's Monday at the latest, or Friday, or if you wanna do it that way.
Well, and is it something that maybe, can you reach out to him and just be like, hey, here's kinda what we were discussing?
Absolutely.
What are your thoughts, and maybe he gets, starts visiting with Jesse on on what his roles have been this last year? And maybe gather information from some teachers and staff over there and figure out. What they want, what they feel, um. I I mean, I think that's, there's there's a lot of things that we can pull information from that, I feel like we're not.
Heck, maybe he's got the career advisor endorsing already.
I can certainly reach out to, uh, Dr. Ziegler ASAP in the morning, I had nothing else to do, so. Not serious, but I will, I will call him.
Yeah.
And then do that, and I can line that up, um, back to my, the original question was. Do we want to hire a principal as a full board or assign a committee? Sounds like we wanna do it as a full board, but I'm good for you guys, cause you're not gonna be happy any other way, rather than just.
Well, I I'll say this, since we have a vote on it anyway, I'm good with it, there might be advantages to having a committee.
Yeah, I agree, I I'm not saying that I need to be involved with it, I just wanted to be able to listen to him, I I could sit in the corner or watch it online, that's fine.
I'm good.
I just wanted to be able to see it, so I could.
I'd prefer to see staff that they're going to lead and their their superior on the interview.
On the committee, right. Does it think it is all, like, committee, wanna go that way?
I think.
I think so, I don't know why we need to drag a full board in.
Okay, no, like, and when I brought it up, I just, like I said, wanted to be able to either sit in the room and observe or watch it online.
Right, and yeah, we got that clarification, so I.
Okay. Okay.
I'm fine with that.
Yep.
I just wanted to be able to see the interviews too, also.
Okay, and even if they're just recorded, if I can't watch them live, I can go back and watch them and, whatever it is, I mean.
Okay, so. We'll set up a committee, which we're gonna do right now. Uh, and I will get ahold of Mr. Ziegler and figure out if we need to do a special meeting to. We do need to do a special meeting to further define. You know, what our principal position is gonna be.
Remember we're starting interviews, did you say, after the eighteenth?
After the eighteenth, but, you know, I was just thinking we should not drag our feet too long.
No, no, I, yeah, I don't disagree, I just was, I couldn't remember dates.
Yeah, I I don't have a, I don't have a date in mind yet, either, so. Um, okay, so for a committee. Um, we have two board members on personnel right now, they don't have to be on the committee, but I think it's Dwayne and and Damian, so. Do you guys want to be on the committee, I mean, if not, you know.
I will, I'm not.
I'm glad to help out too, I mean, I'll certainly be on it, but Dwayne, what are your feelings?
It doesn't matter, if you wanna do a Jody, I'm fine with that. I don't need to be there.
Okay, it's your your call.
One piece that I have a concern is I'm in Oklahoma City on April twenty. Twenty, or through the twenty-fifth, so that might be a consideration, that's gonna be interview time, perhaps I should yield to another.
Oh, very well, could, it could be, it's like a calendar, but.
I'm sure I'd probably be around if I needed, if you need, need to jump in.
I mean, I I don't have to be there, Jody, I just, I I can be there.
It's a busy time for all of us, we're, we're all.
Yeah, it's gonna be crazy times.
Yeah, got stuff going on.
Like, we can do interviews in the evening, that'd be great, but whatever.
Uh, typically it's worked good for late afternoon, you know, like, four o'clock, you know, type of timeframe works good, especially if you have a couple teachers. Administrators on, it rolls pretty nice that way for for interviews, um. Any volunteers, I mean, do you wanna do it?
No, I wouldn't do it, if you wanna do it, go ahead.
If if it's gonna fall during that time, I can jump in, if it's not, then he can do it with that.
Yep, oh yeah, absolutely, there's no rhyme or reason, so, um, so, John and myself can be the two representative board members. And then I would like Mr. Dr. Ziegler, um, and I'll call him and coordinate with him. And Dr. Vogel, I'd like you to be on. And, Amber, you could be on, please. And we would like, what do we do? And we would like, what did we do last time? Two two teachers or?
Two teachers. You could have more, but it's usually two teachers.
Two from each school.
Usually one from each school.
One from each, from each. Or you could have two from from elementary, since it is an elementary.
Yeah, I would suggest two from elementary, at least.
I think you should include Bonnie. She works with this person every day of the week. She would have a voice.
Recruit a teacher.
Can I leave it up to you, Mr. Patterson, to choose two?
Yeah, do you, I'm assuming I'm selecting now?
No, you don't have to.
Oh, I mean, I can.
I mean, and I think it is a good idea to at least consider Bonnie as well, as well. She's works as closely as she does. I'm very fine, but up up to you.
Well, for teacher wise, you guys can decide on the the ladder. I'd probably go Robin and Amanda. They're kinda right in the middle grades.
Okay.
So we're not the two extremes. We're just kinda right in the middle that can understand the lingo of the grades below for Robin than the grades above for Amanda.
How you guys work to serve.
Should, I've been on the last stream.
And Robin interviewed me.
She transmits.
Yeah, okay. That is a big committee, but it's okay. So we've got, who's taking notes?
Two board members, superintendent, principal, and you've said, and and how many you choose. So you said two teachers, maybe Bonnie.
That's it. That's seven.
So we have seven right now.
Okay.
Four minutes, right?
So and Amber.
You need Amber there.
Four minutes.
There's seven people right now.
Okay. With with Bonnie?
No.
Okay, make it eight.
Okay.
Bonnie. I mean, and and we don't have to hold the same exact format of everybody ask a question or that sort of thing. We can just designate, you know, a couple people to do that kind of thing, too.
Yeah.
I mean, it would be fine, but. Okay, so that will be our hiring committee. Now, we're just short a job description.
I would assume that this has gotta be like the superintendent format where the same question has to be asked to every person. And then you can change follow up questions?
I think so.
Yeah, I would assume that's the way it would have to be. Yeah, okay.
And yeah, and I was advised that it needs to, you follow open meeting laws. It does not necessarily need to be broadcast by board meetings. It's not a board meeting. It's an open meeting. It doesn't need to be broadcast at a board meeting. It can if we want, whatever, you know, we wanna do.
I would say if we could record it, um then the people that aren't present can watch it. But we don't necessarily have to broadcast it, I don't think.
The only asterisk there, I'll say, is that you do need to disclose to the interviewee which one goes and what you're doing.
I prefer not to broadcast myself, especially when you're doing job interviews. I I just think that's tough. Cause you're broadcasting, you don't know who's watching it. It's already, you're already nervous, cause you're interviewing for a principal position and it can be broadcast to the world, but.
Yes, to me, it's part of the position if you're an administrator in a school.
I have no problem with it just being recorded. So I, to me, it doesn't, that part, the broadcasting end, it probably doesn't mean as much as these meetings do.
Okay, uh next steps. Figure out uh uh we're gonna have a special meeting. I will do that. Get a little doctor's exam. You guys have anything else on this principal search that we need to be considering? Salary, I always said salary. Board sets that.
Some kind of a guideline for salaries, you know, starting your offer or whatever.
Yeah, I think the, I think we actually make that determination on the final, after the final recommendation, right? We make a, we forward to make an offer.
I gotta wanna know what they're blocking into. Some kind of a start.
Should come up to the range right now?
What's our current?
Seven five.
Seven five. So we'll throw out a range. I always like ranges, cause the employer hears the low number and the interviewee hears the high number. That's all anybody ever gets.
I'm looking to find that document that Alexis sent, the ever administrative pay. I think that's one of our biggest challenges.
That I have principals in.
Yeah, I'd have principals. That one that I've built it down to just superintendents, what you had. I'm not sure if I can use this.
Uh you know what? You can look for that. Let's let's keep rolling. We'll just circle back to that. Uh new business, uh operation and maintenance. We've got some bare inspections we rolled through, it looks like.
Yes, and um if you open up the documents, you'll see the um listed deficiencies. And then after that, you'll see the um corrections for those deficiencies. At Richardson Taylor, there's nothing major. Um however, in Taylor, if you open up that one. And this was something I was concerned about at the beginning of the year, that that fire alarm does not have, does not contact an outside entity when it goes off. So for example, if it went off on Saturday, nobody would know about it except for the person who's walking by the building and hears it.
Okay. So does this one go to dispatch in Dickinson?
No, it it goes to a monitoring.
Oh, okay.
Nardini, I think has that. So we we have Nardini over here, and Nardini has switched around, so they're, before they were just doing uh the sprinkler suppression stuff. Now they're doing the whole gamut, so fire extinguishers, fire alarm inspections, um fire suppression, hood suppression. So Nardini does all that over here. So it'd be nice if we could work with Nardini over there. And BJ had him take a look at the, it's a Simplex Grinnell unit over there. And there is an interface um where we can put a card in there so we can connect to an outside entity. He was gonna um check with Simplex Grinnell to see if um they could work together to get that card put in there. And then Nardini would then be the monitoring. And then we'd be, yeah, yeah, I mean, so that's kinda where we're looking at for that.
Does does Taylor Fire Systems, and I I just don't remember this, does it have heat and smoke detectors tied in it, too? Or is it just pole stations?
There's gotta be smoke detectors somewhere.
Well, I would think so.
I think there is. I think there's heat in, but I'm not, don't quote me on that.
Okay. There must be, otherwise they would've said that, right?
I I would assume, I I would assume that that's gotta be something that would have to be updated. Like, that's not a grandfather in type situation.
Consideration, okay.
Um and then the the other big issue was the hood suppression system in the kitchen. We've been getting dinged for this, and it says on there, this is a re- repeat offense. And basically, uh we looked at, well, we we don't cook with enough grease to cause any vapors. Like, it's not like we're frying french fries and stuff like that. So either what we did is, we needed to get it fixed in order to meet code. Or we could have it removed. And it's an old system, and we decided that we were gonna get it removed. But the only part that got removed was, you know, the exterior nozzles or whatever. We still have the tank and everything else. And you need to have somebody who knows what they're doing come in, cause that tank's under pressure. And if you hold the wrong wire or something, you're gonna have a major mess. So we're, once again, we're gonna work with Nardini. He he can, you know, take care of the tank, and if BJ wants to clean out the rest of the stuff or whatever, we'll, but we're gonna see what we need to do with that. So we either need to get a new one or remove it, so we're gonna remove it.
Yep.
And then there's the usual um dings on appliances plugged into extension cords or power strips. And she did happen to go out and um she did take a look at the crow's nest. And there happened to be a perfect example of why you don't plug, um I use extension cords with appliances. And granted, that's temporary, you know, um but the two cords were fused together. That's how warm it got. And you could not pull them apart. So but granted, you know, that was being used, I don't, you know, during games and stuff. I'm sure it was unplugged at the other end, you know. But just imagine now, you have an appliance that's plugged in all the time and generating that much heat. That's, so she really liked that, so she cut it and took it.
This is why we don't do this.
Yes, so this is why you don't do this.
So you may use as a bad example. Everybody uses a bad example.
I'll make sure when I talk to her at the next fight, tell her not to bring up names. She's using it as an example.
But other than that, um those were the main things. If you have any other questions, let let me know. I did send a response back to um Deputy Fire Mar- Marshall and each fire chief, so they're aware of what can.
Good. Any other questions on bare inspection? Okay, we got some open enrollment.
Um.
Is that singular?
Open enrollments, I guess. Um first, we have Aubrey Hunky, currently a third grader.
Seventh.
Oh, currently second grader, going to be a third grader next year. And they're in the Dickinson School District, so they completed the open enrollment application at the beginning of the year and met the requirements for the deadline.
Okay, and we have room? We're good?
Yep.
Well, currently a student already, right?
Yep.
Yes, the current student.
Okay, sorry. I just wanna make a motion on that one.
I salute.
Moving second for the Hunky, open roll. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Okay, next.
Next, we have the Witty family. And if one's in preschool and the other one is, it doesn't have a grade.
Those are upcoming grades. I think it's a kindergarten.
Okay. So what, preschooler and a kindergarten?
And again, current students. No, no, current students, no.
No. They would like to live about ten miles away and would prefer a smaller school.
Do we have room? In those grades?
Yeah, we're good. Okay. Wanna make a motion on that one?
I'll make a motion to accept the Witty kids.
Ready? Okay, you got a motion, you got a second?
I'll second.
Motion, a second discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same side? Okay, that motion carries.
And then we have um current preschooler Blake DeeDee. And I assume he'd be in kindergarten next year.
Correct.
So. And they're in the Hebert School District.
I'll make a motion to accept the DeeDee student.
Okay, got a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Shannon. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? All right, motion carries. We got those three. Letters of resignation, worst part. Looks like we have three. And do we, is this?
Yeah, we'll do a motion on it.
Information. Oh, there's a, we need a motion on one.
You just, on the teacher.
Just on the, just the teacher only, right?
Right.
Okay, so that is the first one.
The first one is from Mr. Peg Gann.
Yeah.
Okay, I guess we need a motion to accept. Does it motion, Mr. Anderson, a motion? Did Dwayne move? You have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Shannon. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same side? Okay, motion carries. That's the only one we need a motion on. The others are, I think we do, uh Ms. Chapa, I think she's moving to the one ten. This gets is moving her. Oh, okay. Okay, RECTC.
Uh we met last week Wednesday. Their registration for classes starts. Dr. Vogel's got everything for.
RECTC, yep. And our students are just getting their schedules done, so all the open hours, they get those catalogs and they pick.
They're gonna offer a welding course this summer, which is.
Big.
Big.
It's big.
Yeah, a lot of kids interested in that, so.
That's all I got. So it sounds like something I should attend.
You should.
My recruiter hat on.
You should talk to her on that.
Oh, yeah, I.
Yeah.
Um RESP, anything on that? Okay, Amber, before we adjourn, did you, did you find some salaries?
So sorted down the principals, you know, it has assistant principal, director, and then principal superintendent. So I I just sorted down to just what's listed as principal. The range is all the way for base. They have a total compensation in a base. The total compensation includes like your uh health, dental, the TFFR is probably the biggest of that, the bunker retirement, right? Anyway, the lowest is forty eight thousand nine in Wing. The highest is one sixty three in Bismarck.
And this is base, you said?
This is base, total compensation. Some of the highest is in the ones, one eighties range in Fargo.
What do we have, like, um schools around us?
Well, yeah, I'll dig into. So ours, we reported, we reported seventy five base and ninety two total for one position. We reported ninety two eight base and a hundred and five total for the other position. In that kinda range in there for drivable distance, if you will. Of course, Dickinson, you know, we gotta consider that as most of our. Dickinson's range in the one, one twenties, some of the lowest base I'm seeing, all the way up to all the way up to one forty one for one, oh, one forty six for another in Dickinson. So interesting enough, that one forty six for total compensation is only one forty seven. Or say, let me sort alphabetically here so I can.
Yeah, I'm sort of like.
I don't know.
Mont.
Mont. And now this would be a course reported for the twenty two, twenty three year. Mont, they had two, one reported at ninety one base, one reported at seventy four base. And then their total compensation is ninety four and seventy nine.
That's principal to Mont?
Well, I sorted all principals here. Now, like I said, they had that assistant principal role, and interesting enough, that. Well, I sorted all principals here. Now, like I said, they had that assistant principal role, and interestingly enough, that some of those ranges were right up there too, so. What else you guys want to hear on E- Ebrin or?
Sure. Ebrin, Glen Olin.
E- Ebrin was, just one reported at seventy-seven. And seventy-seven, one twenty for total compensation, so not that much there. Uh, must be in Lua. Glen Olin, Glen Olin just reported one at eighty-two. Total compensation of eighty-six. Yes, you want to know Killier?
Nope.
Yeah, what is Killier?
Killier adds two, one at ninety-one, total compensation of ninety-seven, the other at one thirteen, total compensation of one twenty-four.
I was thinking it was gonna be a good tie.
Yeah, you got it. Should we not run a range of, listen at a sixty-five to eighty-five range or something?
Sounds fair.
It's, it's kind of broad, yeah.
Was it already listed? I just asked if something was already listed.
Nothing listed, so, okay. Well, we can add that to our, our listings of sixty-five to eighty-five. As a range, it's still ultimately gonna be set by the, by the board when we have it.
Yeah, just sorted to Dickinson averages.
You may get somebody with some experience yet or?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I mean, it's, it's not a hard, not a hard fix to go on.
Right. And Dickinson average is one thirty-one.
And then honestly, our total compensation is very good because we pay the T F F R and we. Health insurance.
Good package.
And all that, so it's, we start with a lower base and with the high, high end of total compensation. Okay, guys, um, anything? Meeting adjourned.